All in favor? Motion passes. New business joint public hearing.
Mayor Commissioners, Planning Board, and members of the public, welcome to the August 11th joint public hearing. There's some quick ground rules for the joint public hearing. This is an opportunity for the public to express their thoughts, their ideas, and their concerns related to two different entitlement issues today. The Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board and staff will not engage in dialogue at this time, but after the meeting or any time beyond that, if you have additional questions, please feel free to contact town staff. We will go through this process today twice. So first, the staff and, in the case of one of the cases which has an applicant, will provide a general overview of the request. The Board of Commissioners will ask questions to clarify. The Planning Board will get an opportunity to ask questions for clarification, and then the mayor will open and close a joint public hearing. Our first case is a zoning map amendment 2025-2. It's the rezone of 301 Jones Street and 108 Pierce's Road. Just as a general reminder, rezoning cases have particular standards in which the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board must compare the case to to ensure that these standards are met. They include health, safety, and welfare, is it appropriate for the location, reasonable in the public interest, and other relevant factors per the Unified Development Ordinance. The property in this case, 301 Jones Street, 108 Pierce's Road, the applicant is Okane and Associates on behalf of CP Enterprises of North Carolina LLC. The property pins are on the screen, and it is 1.9 acres. The town satisfied its public hearing notification requirements, which included posting signage, mailing notices, circulation in the general paper, and additionally, this has been posted on the town website. Current zoning of the properties are 2, residential 2. To the north is office and institutional zoning. To the south and the southeast is R2, heavy commercial. To the east is R2, and to the west is R2 and RMF, residential multifamily. This property sits between Pierce's Road and Jones Street, just for reference there. Zoning is not planning, but rather zoning is a tool we use to implement our plans. And so when we evaluate a zoning case, the first thing we look at is the future land use map. Does the request fit within what the future land use map says that how the town should grow? In this case, staff believes that it does. So the future land use designation for these two parcels is suburban commercial, and one of the uses for suburban commercial is as follows: commercial retail and service uses at varying scales and development intensities depending on the site and with potential incorporation of residential use as zoning allows. And we believe that rezoning to general commercial fits within this use type. There's additional policy alignment as well. In addition to the future land use map, this is promoting commercial development where infrastructure currently exists. This is in line with the 2030 strategic plan, and we talk about growing smart. This is also a significant equity and small business opportunity. We talked a lot about affordable housing, but that's also half the battle, right? The other half is affordable small businesses. How do we provide opportunities for entrepreneurs? And creating smaller lots are smaller opportunities for entrepreneurs is in line with the 2030 strategic plan and many of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. This property also benefits from the connection of Jones Street. So a larger developer is part of their impact fees is paying for the Jones Street connection, and as a result, it's opened up some of these smaller lots for development. And this is one example of that occurring within the old Wakefield town site. The outcomes, the property will be rezoned from R2 to GC, if you rezone it from R2 to GC, and it'll enable a broad range of commercial uses on that property. The applicant and the owner's representative are here. I'd like to invite them up and give them an opportunity to speak about their project.
Sure. Curtis Jungles, representing 24/7 Fitness, owner of the current property under CG Enterprises. So what we're looking to do is rezone as currently we are located in the shopping center across from the DMV. We're looking to expand the 24/7 Fitness Gym, also adding some retail commercial there on that site. Questions?
Questions from the Board of Commissioners.
Any questions from the Board?
When you say expand, are you gonna have two separate locations, or are you... Okay.
No, we're looking to close that site currently that we're currently in. We are constrained on that location.
Any other questions from the Board? Comments?
None.
At this time, we will take any questions or comments from the Planning Board members.
Questions from the Planning Board.
Questions. I'm glad you're bringing the plan back to grow 24/7 there. That's good.
No questions at this time.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Staff recommends opening the public hearing for this zoning map amendment, and after public hearing and discussion closes, we recommend referring the matter to the Planning Board for consideration. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? Come to the podium, name and address. Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the proposed project? Come to the podium, name and address.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Walton. I live at 4014 Watsonia Drive in Zeppelin, and I'm speaking here tonight against this zoning request. I'm against this zoning request because general commercial isn't an efficient zoning type in terms of land use. This is because general commercial zoning solely allows for commercial businesses to exist on a property in a zoning type and nothing else. This inefficient land use results on missed out property tax revenue, increases the cost of giving utilities to this property, encourages the individual vehicle use, consumes more of our nature and land, et cetera. Instead of using general commercial to zone this property, this government should use one of the only good things you guys have done in my time here in town, which is not a lot, and I can only count them on one hand, and that is regional mixed-use zoning. If this property use this zoning type, you can have a five-story building with a 24-hour fitness and retail space, and four stories or less of apartments and/or office space, or more if you don't build a parking lot, which would be much more efficient land use and it would have the following effects, which are that it will increase the value of the property, it will increase the property tax revenue for the town, furthermore, it will cost us to bring utilities to this property in the long term. It will increase the walkability of the surrounding area of the property in addition to slightly reducing traffic and slightly discouraging use of individual vehicles. Next, putting this property under regional mixed-use zoning would allow for Westland in nature to be consumed by us. In addition to that, housing costs in town would be reduced. If apartments are built above the 24-hour fitness and retail space, they'll be built on this property if zoned for regional mixed-use zoning, and the same can be said for the rent for businesses if office spaces built above instead of apartments. In conclusion, it would be more efficient and beneficial to all of us in our town if this property was zoned for regional mixed-use zoning instead of general commercial. And if this government does this, I can count the good things you have done in my time in town here on two hands instead of one. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wished to speak neither for or against the project at this time? Hearing none. Do we have any emails or letters concerning to be considered for the record?
No, sir, we don't.
Thank you. This time, I will close the public hearing, and if you have any questions pertaining to this development, please contact the staff or the applicant following the public hearing. Next, amendment to mobile vendors?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, and Planning Board members. Today, we'll be discussing the mobile food vendor tax amendment, updates, tax amendment On the screen are the tax amendment review standards on the town's Unified Development Ordinance. I'm not going to go over all of these in this presentation, but if you would like for me to go back to them at a future opportunity, just let me know, and I'd be more than happy to do that. The property that we'll be discussing today is located in the Downtown Core or DTC zoning district on the map that is highlighted in red, and the surrounding properties highlighted in yellow are the Downtown Periphery or DTP zoning districts. And this is with food trucks concerning operation within the right-of-way, and this is, just to clarify, not a proposal for operations on private property, only with regards to properties that are in the public, such as Northrendal Avenue and other streets where food trucks are operating. Procedural uncertainty. Town staff evaluation revealed inconsistencies related to mobile food vendors. UDO Section 454-3C allows mobile food vendors only on private property, but historically, permits to businesses have been issued for mobile food vendors on public streets within the DTC zoning district. Sudden enforcement change could raise fairness and address due process concerns, and we have internal processes on how to address these uncertainties, and as a part of that, town staff is asking the Board to consider potential changes or affirm the intent of when the ordinance was approved in 2020. Now, these are some opportunities as well as challenges of food trucks operating in the downtown Zeppelin area. Some opportunities include increase in diverse offerings. It could bring more people to the downtown area, and it is an equitable, entrepreneurial-friendly business that can scale to a brick-and-mortar restaurant in the future. And some challenges with food trucks in the downtown area include a reduction in parking spaces, no regulation around managing spaces, noise, and a competition with existing property tax-paying brick-and-mortar restaurants and other businesses in the downtown Zeppelin Public hearing notification per UDO Section 236. A paper of the general circulation was sent out two times in the Wake Weekly. Additionally, this was posted on the town's Zeppelin's website, and notices were mailed to all downtown property owners who had a food truck permit within the past year. These are six advertised... So town staff has advertised for six solutions to potentially address this issue. The first solution is to prohibit the mobile food vendors from operating in the DTC zone district. This would discontinue all food truck operations on the public streets in the Downtown Core DTC zoning district. And some key considerations would be it ends the historical precedent, simplifies enforcement, and removes flexibility. The second solution would be designated spots along Vance and Horton Streets. This would create permanent spaces for secondary streets, in other words, off Northrendal Avenue. And some key considerations would be town management likely. There's a possibility for a rotation system, and as well as existing power infrastructure would be available. The third solution are for mobile food vendors to operate within limited days on Vance and Horton Street. This would allow food trucks on designated days only, and this would appeal to weekend vendors, and it would be easier for part-time enforcement. The fourth solution is for one mobile food vendor spot along Arrendale Avenue, and this would compromise between restriction and access on our main street, and this is town management likely. The fifth solution is to allow mobile food trucks on Northrendal Avenue, and this requires it to be a little more structured as well as more of an active enforcement. And the sixth solution is to align the UDO with historical practice. This means to amend the UDO to match the historical public street pertaining to mobile food vendors in the DTC district. Maintains the status quo. It requires a structured and active enforcement. And it's important to note that while town staff is working to, you know, on solving these uncertainties, the... We're having this as the public process as a good way to ensure that finding a solution is done fairly. As far as the enforcement is concerned, town staff will develop an enforcement strategy based on the Board of Commissioners' selected option. If options three, five, or six are chosen, businesses will retain the scheduling responsibilities, and if options two or four are chosen, the town assumes responsibility for vendor scheduling. Now, some special consideration would be if the Board were to elect option one or any option, staff will collaborate with the town attorney to ensure that enforcement respects the economic expectations of current permit holders until that mobile food vendor permit expires. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Davis?
Can you speak to what is the process that food trucks have to go through to be permitted to operate downtown?
Yeah, so how we've been doing it historically is the business owner will reach out to town staff, and then we'll help them complete what we call the temporary use permit application. Once we do that, we go through our typical one- to-two-week-long review process. They pay the $75 invoice fee, and we make sure that, you know, that they are in the no more than two parking spaces, which is the requirement that we have for one or view other food trucks throughout the Zeppelin area.
Do you know about how many, on average, we have that are operating per night or per week?
Historically, I believe we've had four businesses who've had food trucks in the downtown in the DTC Zeppelin area, but I can check up on that just to make sure and let you know it later.
Are the operating of those food trucks operating consistently, like on a daily basis, a weekly basis, weekends? How are we monitoring that?
Typically, we, from my understanding, we have like a limited days of operation. It also just depends on the, you know, the... When the business owners would like for the mobile food vendors to operate, but we usually try to limit them as much as possible is how we've historically done that.
So the UDO gives the Planning Director the authority to condition temporary use permits. Conditions are usually based on time or location or things like that. So generally or historically, there has been no time that has been placed on these permits. We've asked the operating businesses to not operate food trucks while the business is closed, and when we are confronted with an uncertainty in terms of how we enforcement, we have been erring on the side of free and fair land use per the North Carolina Supreme Court. To resolve those questions or to resolve this in a way that will allow us to increase enforcement, that requires the will of the Board. So we can amend permits to do certain things in order to control or perhaps manage our right-of-ways, but at the end of the day, changing this would have to be a Board decision.
Our question. Are we typically, those food trucks, are they operating during the day? And you might have to speak to this map based on what you just said. Are they operating during the day when businesses, when our businesses are open? Because the statement was that it can produce competition for our businesses. So I know we're talking to mainly about food if we're talking about vendor food trucks. So what businesses typically are being affected by the food trucks if it's the competition?
Yeah, so Matt, yeah, I might be able to answer this a little more clearly than me, but typically, mobile food vendors, they usually operate during the same business hours as the restaurant or whatever that business may be are open within those same business hours. And so, I mean, we've gotten numerous complaints from, you know, I don't want to necessarily name names, but like, you know, other businesses in the DT, you know, the Downtown Core zoning district of Zeppelin. So that's most of the complaints that we've received from for these food trucks operating in the DTC district.
We have complaints coming in for the specific reason of the competition for food, so we're affecting those businesses that are operating at the same time?
Yes, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I can add to that, too. Some of the complaints we've gotten had to do with parking management as well, and that's where we're able to change some of the guidance to not have food trucks or cones there when your business is not open. So I would say it's split, probably 50/50 in terms of the type of complaints that we've gotten. The question about are downtown businesses or businesses in general, restaurants in general, right, affected by food trucks? The answer is yes. To what extent? It probably depends on the business. And to what extent should the town regulate or not regulate this? I mean, that's a policy decision for the Board. So I mean, we're more than happy to ensure that you have the best information to make that decision, and that's why we're doing this today.
Yes, thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Harrison?
No questions, thank you.
Matt, just for me, give me a little bit of clarity. I know some of the new businesses just starting out, that food truck plays a big part in their success. So I want to make sure we have the option that's gonna set those guys up for success as well, taking consideration of the businesses that are currently running and complaining as well. What is that option that we look like as a Board? We can give where everybody, what I call that happy medium, where we make sure that the new businesses are set up for success as well as the businesses that are currently running can kind of...
Sure, well, I think you, that the best phrase there is happy medium, right? The planning department didn't want to do is presuppose what that is. You know, our job is to provide a range of choices that may meet your policy goals and guide you to a decision. That's why, with the exception of probably one, which would be to just let everything expire and not touch this again, two through six would allow for, to some extent or to a large extent, food truck operations downtown. And so, you know, what we're looking forward to hearing from the businesses that are impacted by this, or the businesses that rely on food trucks as part of drawing patrons, right? You know, what, interested in what they have to say. We're obviously interested in what the Commissioners are hearing, what the Board of, the Planning Board is hearing, as part of figuring out is, you know, which one of these six is the right choice and perhaps some combination thereof, so.
Once they buy the, once they purchase the permit, how long is that permit good for, Matt?
It's good for a year.
And then they come back and re-up after that one year?
Correct, yep.
With that, Matt, are we seeing a variety of food trucks?
Like if we're talking about specific businesses, that allows opportunity for various food trucks to come in, as you stated in one of your slides, to bring in a variety of opportunity of restaurants? Like typically, in my mind, right now, we have two restaurants that operate in the downtown. Am I correct in that? Is it just two?
Norbury and Armando's Pizza.
Because the two full-service ones right now, yeah.
You have Taco, you have Rositas as well.
Rositas, yeah. Three full-service ones, yeah.
Open until...
Hold their hours, yeah.
So just questioning and making sure that if we're looking, talking about a happy medium, that we're bringing a variety as well?
About the diversity of the food product? I mean, I would say so. I mean, there's a variety, there's, I think it was a Guatemalan restaurant, you know, last time I was driving downtown, I mean, or a food truck downtown, for sure. There's definitely more variety. So where does that balance? Where's a happy medium, Commissioner Miles?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? I think this is just giving us an opportunity to provide staff with information for the future, because, you know, as we grow, there are gonna be other restaurants, hopefully, opening downtown, and this will give some guidance as far as just how we want to allow these food trucks to operate. Any questions? Any more questions or comments from the Board? Planning Board?
I think one thing to consider is the safety implications of not moving these food trucks off of Arrendale. I know during the day, if you were to drive around 4:30 to 6, you know, there are four food trucks, two on the right, two on the left, and Arrendale sometimes turns into a single-lane road. And I don't know if that's led to any accidents or any of the businesses complained about that, or any citizens have brought that up, but to me, that's the most pressing concern, that that's still a highway and it comes down to one lane. And I think also, what you said, having a business, imagine having a restaurant, and then right in front of your restaurant, you have a food truck selling food cheaper than your brick-and-mortar restaurant, because you have to pay staff, you have to pay, you know, food fees, you have to pay a cook, you know, you have to pay taxes, your employees. So I think moving them, to me, and I don't know how the Board feels, but to me, I think option two is that happy medium that Mr. Miles was talking, Commissioner Miles was talking about, because if you go out at night, Vance Street is kind of empty, right? Mute or construction during the day has all those spots, but at night, Vance is almost empty, and then Horton, after you walk past, what's the name of the lounge that's there? Yeah, after you walk past Spotlight, and then Tanampa, there's nothing. The street is empty, the businesses across the street from Spotlight and Tanampa are also vacant, they're just like lots. So I think having designated spots on that street, on both those streets for food trucks, as many as we can get, would make people walk down those streets, would make people see Tanampa, Spotlight, maybe see Mona Pants' place, maybe when the new Whitley Furniture place opens up, though people will be able to walk through there and see it while they're eating at night. It won't be open, but it'll just help bring more foot traffic. So I think that's, from my perspective, I'm passionate about this because I know people personally who almost got into car wrecks trying to get out of their car, and, you know, trucks are kind of swerving close, you know, over the yellow lines in order to go around the food trucks, but that's just my, my opinion on that.
I think I have two things. I've noticed that they don't have on any of these options as far as timeframes are concerned. Do we have any type of regulations on how long the food trucks can be outside, maybe past 2:00 a.m., that kind of thing?
We don't have that in the UDO. The only control we have on that right now is conditioned by the Planning Director. So we're not issuing any more, any new downtown food truck permits right now. So if the concern is food trucks staying out downtown past a certain time, no matter what, if the Board decides not to move forward with us and return to the 2020 text as written, these will drop off and that will go away. It is certainly a good question and a valid consideration as we think what the text will actually look like when we're done with it, and that could be something we could put in, absolutely.
Okay, so we can amend that as far as like adding it in?
Sure.
Okay. And then, I guess, for a comment, I think I also agree that when you're walking down that main street, it's Arrendale, that goes like the Creative Cup and then Armando's Pizza, when there are lines on that sidewalk, it is, you know, it's pretty, it can get pretty congested, so when you're walking through, you know, you kind of have, it's just safety is, I would consider, an issue during the day. So, yeah, I think some of the happy medium is also two as well, two and three.
Laura?
A few things here. Sorry, I'm just taking a note. So the existing permits, they are valid for a year.
They will be valid until they expire.
Okay, and there's, so even if we change this, the Board of Commissioners changes it, there's nothing, they're kind of grandfathered in, correct? So they have to wait for those to expire?
Correct.
Okay. The timeframe, if we were to change this to start the enforcement, so in other words, they're not gonna vote on this until potentially the next board meeting, which is next month. Does that go into effect immediately, or do, does the town still need to go and modify the UDO before they can start enforcing it?
Our intent was to take this conversation, take the feedback, take your recommendation at the end of the night, and then craft a...
the UDO before they can start enforcing it?
Our intent was to take this conversation, take the feedback, take your recommendation at the end of the night, and craft a preferred option from what we've advertised. That preferred option can be deliberated in a couple different ways. It could be returned to the planning board, it could go straight to the Board of Commissioners in September, and the, let's say the Board of Commissioners ends up adopting something in September, there would likely be some type of grace period in terms of how we would enforce it, and we'd only start with new permits anyways. And then, we have, I'd like to think we have a great relationship with the current businesses, and so we work with each one just to ensure that their, their rights that they were granted with these permits are still respected, and use it as an opportunity to promote downtown in different ways.
So, in the interim, so from now until we adopt or don't adopt, we are not approving any permits?
Correct, yep. The ones that are granted are the ones that can continue until they expire, yep.
When we talked about the complaints, were a lot of the complaints of being on Arendelle?
They, I would say, I don't know, three-quarters of them were about Arendelle, yes. The rest of them were generally about the reservation of parking spots.
Understood. Now, when we talk about option two, which is the designated spots on Vance and Horton, you mentioned that there's existing power infrastructure available?
There is, yes.
Would the town be required to do anything to make sure that it is readily available for those food trucks?
Andy goes, no, but there is power next to the town parking lot, that's some of the available power, and that would need an adopter for food trucks, but the other ones are not.
Does the town have to provide?
Not necessarily. That's something that can be debated here, but not necessarily, no.
And that's talking about Vance, what about on Horton? There's power.
There, that doesn't need an adopter, that's my standing.
Town power.
Town owns the power, correct. So the town could sell the power, or sell the spot, or rent the spot, yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about the town renting that to charge for that power then, correct?
Yeah, so option two would be designated spots, and it would require, as part of the slide here that talks about enforcement, how would we enforce it? Well, whichever option is selected, then our charge is to develop a strategy to enforce that. So let's say it is option two as it's written, we would have to develop a way to manage a food truck rotation on spots determined by the board, so.
Okay, so now we're talking about town staff is having to manage this, correct?
Correct.
But then we're also talking about enforcement with our law enforcement as well in those designated areas, and then we're also talking about collecting fees or whatever for rental or of the space?
It would definitely be the enhancement of our existing permitting program, yes.
Okay. And who's going to manage that? Have we gotten down that rabbit hole yet? I mean, is that the, the planning department is going to be taking on the responsibility of collecting these fees and managing this rotation and that kind of stuff?
As the UDO is written now, the answer to that question would be yes, but it does not necessarily have to be the planning department.
Okay. So we haven't explored that yet of these different options?
There's preliminary discussions internally of how we might do it, but it's one of those things where we're going to start broad, and then as we work with the public and begin to figure out what the right choice is for Zebulon, you know, it'll be part of that decision-making process.
My concern is that, you know, we get it, might be creating more works, and now we're coming before the board and saying, well, now we're understaffed and we need more staff, you know, to enforce this new food truck thing and this rotation, and now we have this downtown coordinator, you know, position that we need. So I'm just, I'm trying to think future of, you know, how this is going to be managed. And then, my only concern is by moving these to Vance and Horton, because I honestly think that is probably the best option, my only concern is if people are at the Fall Line or if they're at Old Raleigh Distillery or one of these drinking establishments, and now they're walking down the street with their drink that's not allowed, or they're inebriated and walking down the street, what is that, what, what, what are we, what kind of worms are we opening with the police having to now enforce this social jurisdiction? Because, you know, I know it's not far, but they're still walking to areas that they shouldn't be in with their, you know, drink in hand or not, you know?
Sure.
So that's just a concern of mine.
The Fall Line has an option to that. You can order food, not the Fall Line, but Old Raleigh. You can order food at Old Raleigh, Q Card, Q, Q, whatever the thing is, and they will go down, they will deliver the food to, from Norris to the, you know, so that's, that's an option.
Sir?
There's a question from Matt. How long did he finish with the end of it?
That was all I had, that was just, you know, my question and the one concern I just wanted to raise.
Yeah. Anyone else from the planning board?
I just have a question about...
Speak, speak into the mic, please.
Can you hear me?
A little bit closer, you gotta, you gotta put it right to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just have a question about, so as far as limited days, what does that mean? Working on all the limited days that they're scheduled to be determined?
Proposed Thursday through Sunday, but that's just a proposal, yep.
As far as, so it also says that it actually requires structures and active enforcement?
As part of the larger ordinance update, we will need to write in how the planning department, or whenever, perhaps the police department, will be tasked to enforce this. It's important, when you do code enforcement, you treat each like case, so you treat each food case issue, or food truck issue, or each tall grass issue the same way. And so we would need to establish as part of this ordinance update what that process is.
And would that also require law enforcement to be present, because any of those foods were a large crack of folks, they're bound to be in total trouble?
This doesn't necessarily mean law enforcement needs to be present or not. I mean, the decision of where to place officers would be with the police chief. If you would ask that question in 100 towns across America, you get 100 answers. So the right answer is, what's the right answer for Zebulon, right? So, mm-hmm.
I have a comment. So I would like to say that I like the food truck option, because it gives us a variety of food to eat, and that's pretty much it.
Anyone else from the, from the planning board?
I think, I think when we talk about, you know, people being drunk and walking down the street, like, that could be an issue, but I think thinking of the amount of, I'm only speaking on my experience of going downtown at night several different times to see what's going on, because people have said, you know, good or bad things, and firsthand witnessing it, there's already groups of people that congregate outside of each establishment regardless, Fall Line, Tanampas, all the other places, people congregate outside, and they're eating, and people are walking back and forth between different establishments and two different establishments, so that's already happening. I think it would actually be easier for law enforcement to keep the Arendelle streets clean with no food trucks, and then all of the food on these other places, it makes it easier to police when, you know, you know, over here, you're right, when people do congregate, there might be a risk, but I think it's easier to be able to go down Arendelle Ave and say, all right, we can easily see everything, there's no food trucks, there's no reason for crowds to be outside, and then when you go down this street, that's when people are eating, but it's not high traffic. So that's just my comment I would make to that.
Anyone else from the planning board? Anyone else?
I have a question, also, I have a question. So, I've been down Horton Street at night, and there's not much light visibility on that road. I would probably consider that a safety concern for food trucks. If we're going to be able to have or host food trucks on that street, I would consider lighting it up more.
Anyone else from the planning board?
So, I just have a question, please, how much would that cost?
You're gonna have to put that thing right up to your mouth, I'm sorry.
You can pick it up like this.
You can pick it up.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question, do you have any idea how much that's going to cost the town to be able to handle this, be able to handle this solution?
The short answer is, is I don't have a dollar figure. It's likely that if we were to take on some of the scheduling ourselves, a portion of a staff member in the planning department would have to manage that. I can't imagine that would be more than a couple hours a week. I don't see the initial rollout, just given the size of our downtown and how many spaces are restaurants ready, that it would be a burden beyond some hourly staff time for a period of time, perhaps a couple years.
So prior to implementation of this, will you guys actually do an analysis to try to figure that out?
Yeah, so if the option is chosen, or if the, will the board is to direct staff to figure out what this would look like, if the town were to take this on, the answer is, yeah, of course, there would be an analysis to what that would cost, yes.
And I think, to her point, is the cost needs to include the lighting and the markation of these spots, as well as any other infrastructure, power, things like that, that needs to be improved, adapters or whatever the case may be, to include, you know, what is the total impact that the town is going to take on to try to implement this, versus right now, you're just issuing a permit, you know, and then it's up to the business owners to manage it.
I would also say, last thing, and I will say nothing else, but I think, think of the lore of having a designated section for just food trucks. So like, let's say, I don't drink alcohol. So let's say if I'm hanging out at my house at 10 o'clock at night and I'm hungry, and I don't want to go to Sheetz to get wings, I can go to Horton at night, and then there's four different food trucks that have options, and I'm just going to pick up food and going home. I'm not necessarily standing in front of, you know, to my back to a bar, or standing around a bar to, you know, where people are maybe drunk and getting food, you know, I can just go there and grab something to eat and go home. Instead of having to park on Arendelle, competing with people who are out in the bar, it's a little bit easier for like a regular citizen to go and get food than, you know, me having to go get wasted and then walk outside and be, let me get some wings, you know, so, just a thought.
Any other questions or comments from the planning board? Thank you. I think we had another question from the board, Commissioner Miles?
Most of statements, I guess you say, Matt, well, this is a question. Matt, at what point do we start talking about a social district that would kind of solve some of this potential, what role will that play for us? Starting to talk about broadening our social district, I know Window currently have it, we have other municipalities in the area that have it, at what point do we start talking about that, Matt?
In a good or bad time, I would say. I think that there's certainly a healthy mix of brick-and-mortar establishments in and around downtown now. You know, there's broader discussions, I think the social district discussion, while it is a sister discussion to this, because we're still talking about people moving around downtown, mostly at night, right? It's a sister discussion, because there's some other implications of the social district, including establishing its boundaries and things like that. So, you know, the answer is, there's not a good or a bad time, but there is a process when you're ready to begin it.
What do we currently have in place? I thought, I thought we created something a while back, so the Fall Line could use that, utilize the alleyway. We had something temporary in place, or something expanded?
No, that's part of the entitlements of the property, is to use a portion of that alleyway, yes.
Okay, I thought we created something, okay.
I'm almost positive that it was something with adjacent space.
We created something in play for that, and something I would like to know more about. We did create something just so they could utilize that, because when they first, Fall Line first opened up, if they came to the midpoint right there line, they were breaking the law if they stepped across the line. So we had law enforcement out there enforcing that at a timeframe, so that became an issue. So we did create something, so it would span out right to where Norris is. So I don't know exactly what we have in place, but I would like to know.
And there could be, we would want to get the ABC folks involved as well, because those would have licensing implications, but there could be some additional things we could do in terms of where alcohol is served. Think about how, for example, let's say the establishment does not serve alcohol, but has seating out on the sidewalk, right? How is that regulated? How is that enforced? It's a similar type of discussion, so.
And I think, from me, talking to fellow board members, I do have a concern when we're now taking our law enforcement and now making them code enforcement, like, now they're going to be out there regulating food trucks when they need to be out in the streets. We're already kind of short-staffed with that, too, as well. So how do we kind of regulate that? Now law enforcement becomes code enforcement for watching out for food trucks.
We have, we have the options before us. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Elaborate on six for me, Matt, if you would, please. Option six for me, what does that look like in planning? Option six, can you elaborate on?
Elaborate on it?
Yes, sir.
So option six is to codify what we, the historical practice, what's currently been happening, which is that any downtown business can pull a food truck permit, we consider them a sponsoring business. That permit can be conditioned by the planning director, but because of historicity, they're allowed to do it, and then they are allowed to park a food truck in two spots in front of their business.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Now we will open up the public hearing. Now's the time for anyone to express their thoughts and ideas, concerns about proposed requests. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment of the food trucks? Come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Bradley. I'm, I apologize for my haste, I, my ignorance, computer illiteracy, I tried to pull up the agenda before the 12 o'clock deadline to get in notes, was having difficulties, I reached out to Anna Gomez, and then finally got a response from, I believe, Matthew Lauer. Pretty quickly gave me the notes, I did it pretty hastily, I don't think it really affects our food truck Mongo Loco, I had a whole thing typed out, I was going to go over. We don't park in the downtown area, we're specifically set up at the Tractor Supply. Only thing to note, we're well within whatever hours y'all may limit, we're not serving bar crowd or anything like that. I guess the biggest takeaway from me would be if we do have a host business, if we're allowed to operate seven days a week, that they perhaps don't restrict us to limit, I can understand from the downtown area, only being able to set up so many days during the week, but us being set up at Tractor Supply six, seven days a week, I don't think that would affect any businesses. I'm really in favor of everything preached, I feel for the businesses downtown, I've been downtown, it's very difficult market to sell to the bar crowd is a different, very different crowd than what we have at the Tractor Supply, we have a loyal, we sell something completely different than anything else in the Zebulon area. One day, knock on wood, we'll be able to afford a brick-and-mortar, but until that day, thank you for at least listening to me and hearing me out, but, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And feel free to contact the staff. Feel free to contact the staff with what you were trying to get, get to them today.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the amendments for the food truck ordinance? Hearing none? Anyone who wishes to speak against the proposed amendment for the food truck ordinance?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mary Beth Carpenter, I live at 214 East Horton Street. We are two blocks away from downtown, and quite often, we hear noise from downtown, from the bars, from the Fall Line, from other establishments downtown, in our home, sometimes with the doors shut after 10 o'clock at night. My husband gets up very early to drive down to Fort Bragg most mornings, and we hear the noise, and we have complained about it to the police and to the business establishments. And one or two have ratcheted things back with the noise, but with this food truck ordinance, I'm very concerned about the safety along Arendelle Avenue. We do go down quite a bit downtown, and we do see a lot of trucks going through, and we've seen some near accidents, and it's just very scary. As far as having Vance and Horton Street for the food trucks, I think that might be an alternative that would work, but I would ask you to consider limiting that to weekend hours only. We do have children in the area that need to get up for school, and please remember, there is a large residential population around here who are affected by your decision. So I'm asking you to please keep... So I'm asking you to please keep these factors in mind when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak against the food truck ordinance text amendment? Hearing none? Is there anyone who wishes to speak neither for or against the food truck amendment ordinance? Do we have any emails, letters to be considered for the record?
We have the one that came in, but it was from Bradley with the Mango Loco, so I'm not sure if he wants me to read. Okay, thank you.
Okay with that? Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. This time I will close the public hearing. And if you have any questions pertaining to, to this request, please contact the staff following this public hearing. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I forgot. We will turn this over to the, to the planning board for their consideration after we adjourn. So back, Matt, to the motion, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Adjourn.